I keep doing a tiny.
Yeah.
All right, let's bring the city council meeting for January 28th, 2025 to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Carter.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Present.
Councilmember Baldwin. Councilmember Davis.
Present.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember Hubler.
Here.
Councilmember McLeimans.
Present.
And Councilmember Rock.
Here. Need to make a motion to dismiss Councilmember Baldwin.
Member to, uh, motion to excuse Baldwin.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all in favor of excusing Councilmember Baldwin, say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, there are no agenda modifications. We'll go on to citizen comments. This is your time to address the council on city business. For those attending virtually, please click the raise hand icon at the top of your screen if you would like to address the council. Anyone with the raised hand icon or who called in, your mics and cameras will be enabled. You will need to turn on your video and microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen or heard. We will start with those who are here in person and move to virtual comments afterwards. You have five minutes, please state your name and address for the record, please.
You have. Okay, good evening, council members. My name is Kelly Stevens and I live at 7602 Myers Road East. I'm here to express my concerns about the proposed Gardenia Platt in our neighborhood. I sent you all an email last week and I want to thank Council McLeimans for taking the time to respond to me. He asked for examples of how we have felt dismissed and bulldozed by city officials, and I'd like to address that now. As I mentioned in my email, this forest, this forest sits on the original 1,000 acres of Bonnie Lake and is surrounded by homes. The forest keeps Lake Bonnie healthy and beautifies our area. During the comment period in the spring of 2023, my husband, neighbors, and I pointed out all the reasons this development and particularly the SEPA should not be approved. The SEPA was riddled with negligent and wrong answers. In my opinion, this alone should have caused the entire proposal to be thrown out. The developers clearly did no research regarding this land or our neighborhood. I encourage you to read my comments, and I've brought them today, I've brought you lots of stuff today. In the hearing on August 24th, 2023, when providing all the evidence about the lack of due diligence from the developers, Medi essentially threw us community members under the bus by saying this was one of the better SEPA submitted. Not only was that extremely disturbing to hear, but it showed us that the city merely cares if developers are checking boxes and not about the quality of their answers or true impact to the community. Later while awaiting, now this one really got me riled up. Later while awaiting the notice of decision, I observed people working on the property. The easement and proposed road is going to be right next to my property, so I have very good eyes on what's happening. So I did observe people out there on the property working, and no work should have been done until the decision was officially released by the city. So I became very upset, knowing somebody from the city must have told the developers that it was going to be approved before the, it, the official decision came out. I did message Medi and I sent her an email, which I've sent you, showed you guys regarding my disappointment, and she directed me to file a report, which I did, and I sent in photos to prove that they were out there working on the property. They stopped work probably within an hour, but I didn't actually see any city official come out, so I'm assuming they got a call, and the decision was officially released by Medi the next day. But this event further degraded my trust in our city officials. I also have a very low opinion of the developers. We've had someone request to cut down a large fir tree on our back property line for a six pack of beer. A property line they also say should be moved by a foot after 68 years of our house being there. To dispute that, we would have to hire our own surveyor and lawyer. They also asked our neighbors to put up our, which our, my neighbor could not be here today. They have some family obligations, but they asked our neighbors to put up a fence and move it onto their property line, which would give them more space for their road. And this is something my neighbors are under no obligation to do, obviously. We have told them we don't agree with them cutting down the large tree on the property line, but I have zero hope that they will respect our wishes, even though they are legally required to. To dispute the SEPA that never should have been accepted in the first place, in my opinion, we were told there is a $4,000 fee to appeal that decision. And Catherine will later show evidence of just how outrageous that fee is compared with other cities surrounding us. It felt like another way to silence community members. The responses to our comments and concerns were also very vague or simple, simply stating noted with no real response. That is public records, I didn't print it because you guys have access to that. One so-called response to environmental concerns that many community members expressed was that a WDFW map said there's no endangered or sensitive species on the property. But DF, WDFW states, this map is a general guide and should not be used to replace site surveys. And I have sent you that too as well. The developers say there's only squirrels and crows in these woods, but I sent photo evidence of the countless deer coyotes and even a beautiful black bear that frequented the forest, among many other animals that we have back there. At every turn, there's gatekeepers with high fees or lawyer representation to suppress community members' thoughts. Outsiders with deep pockets have more influence over our city than community members. What I'm seriously asking you to evaluate is what you want Bonnie Lake to become, and if you want all of these micro lot neighborhoods here. Starting with this one in my backyard, what is best for Bonnie Lake? How will these neighborhoods reduce water costs or 410 congestion, which many of you have made platforms of your campaign? How will unchecked growth affect crime and safety in our town? I asked in my email, and I will say it again now, please consider how it affects the community around it. The.
Is that the five minutes?
Oh, okay. I was about done.
Thank you. Anyone else for the good of the order?
Anyone else wish to speak?
Yeah, everybody's gonna speak.
Council Mayor, I'm Dan Decker, past council member, reside at 204170 Street, East Bonnie Lake, Washington. The Growth Management Act, GMAC, does violate inalienable rights, you know, our constitution. Oops, there goes our constitution. Property is taken by government through GMA. This is called good for us. GMA is violation of the Fifth, Tenth, Fourteenth Amendments of the Federal Constitution and Article One, Section 16, picking clause, Article One, Section Three, due process, Article One, Section 12, equal protection of the Washington State. Well, we called our consultation, but Inslee has really screwed that up. Also, RCW 3678.404 and 070, yeah, the, actually, the Growth Management Act, RCW, is in violation. Well, RCW 6440.20, property rights is also in violation, and SEPA is also in violation. And the list, in the list, would take an hour to speak of, if I started speaking on each item, because there's about 40 other violations going on. It claims it does, doesn't take property rights, yet it does every second of every breath. Where we are to abide by arbitrary and capricious decisions by force. We don't want it, we're forced into it. We are restricted by the GMAC and the use of our property that violates our freedom of contract and free ownership. The GMAC requires that we dedicate property around lakes, rivers, streams, and ponds to the government for no use. We can't use certain amounts of our own property. Oops. These restrictions on property rights take flexibility of use from property owners and takes rights and negotiation agreements from property owners. GMAC has created an unbearable calamity on the people, the homeless people. Think about that. There'd be no homeless people if we had no GMA, Growth Management Act. Removal of GMA would improve understanding of property rights and give a clear, clearer consideration of regulations and requirements. Our property rights have eroded since the development of the GMAC in 1990, and even back further than that, it was called something else. I won't say what I think it was called. Our rights need to be restored, taken back. The dictatorship interfering with our inalienable rights isn't working. The GMAC is only a fascist move to take our inalienable rights away from us. Hey, Bob Ferguson, you're governor now, kiss my, thank you, council.
Anyone else for the good of the order?
Hello. Hello. My name is Jason Stevens. I live at 7602 Myers Road, and I'm also here to really voice my concerns with the Gardenia Platt that would be going right behind our property and voice some concerns about the, just the way the entire process was handled, the way the community's voice was heard, and the way we, we felt through the entire process. I've lived in Bonnie Lake for 15 years now, and I've called Bonnie Lake home for that entire time, and I felt at home here. Up until fairly recently, when I decided, or when, when we decided to start a family and we, we began growing that family, and that's when we started to realize that Bonnie Lake was not meeting our needs, that Bonnie Lake fit into what we needed as single adults, but it didn't fit well with the family. And the reason why I'm saying that is because Bonnie Lake has not grown. In the 15 years that I've been here, in the areas where I've lived, Bonnie Lake has made no growth whatsoever. Outside of maintaining roads, there have been no improvements to the walkability of the neighborhoods and no, no thought and consideration for the existing residents, especially after this plat approval process, and it's been very frustrating to see. And the reason why I say that is where I live, there's a relatively dense, could be close knit community, but most people are afraid to walk in the roads. Myers Road is a dangerous road to walk on, and I say that because there are no sidewalks, there's no provisions, there's very little traffic calming measures or anything to control the, the traffic behavior, so the behavior of the drivers on the road. It's something we didn't know when we moved in. We, we didn't necessarily have a big choice, because when we bought the house, it was, is a pretty tough market to buy into. And now that we live there, we, we learned a lot more about what Bonnie Lake had to offer. So we're not, none of the area where we live is very walkable, and there are no walkable parks, part of that being because it's walkable. So, so anytime we want to go anywhere or do anything, we end up going to Sumner. So we are more residents of Sumner than we are of Bonnie Lake. And that's largely because we don't feel safe walking around to the city centers within, within Bonnie Lake. And with that, I think the city's approval process for new developments, while we're not entirely against new developments, I think it should take into consideration the needs of the locals. So there's, through this whole process, we've learned that there is a ground swell of locals that feel the same as I do. I thought we, I thought it was an island, and no one felt the same as me. But I realized through the petition that we created, that others on the group have created, that there are a bunch of other people that have a lot of the same concerns and feel like growth should only happen if we take into consideration the safety of the residents and the consideration of the locals. And what I mean by that is there's, we get nothing out of this. So there's only negatives from our perspective. And I think the city knew that upfront, and I think it's built into the codes. So the, the radius of notification is embarrassingly small for this development. And I, that's the map that I passed out. It shows the map of notification for this in reference to the neighborhood as a whole. And we expanded that in our recent efforts, and that's when we found out there were a lot more people that could have been involved in this original approval process that were left out. So their voice was left unheard, our voice was loud but small through the process, and we were bulldozed, essentially. There was, we felt like they listened to us, the, the third party arbitrator listened to us, but dismissed us because we weren't loud enough or there weren't enough of us. And, and that's what I wanted to try to share with this map. That there are people that would be in view of this property development that were not notified, and I think that's embarrassing. I think that the Bonnie Lake code should be amended to a much larger radius. It could depend on the, the neighborhood density as it is, whatever. I think it's too small, and I think it limited the ability to have the residents' voices heard in the development of this, this project. And I feel like there could have been a lot more compromise because none of our concerns were heard, and it would have cost $4,000 to appeal the process, and at the time was what we saw, it wasn't justifiable.
That's apparently our time. Thank you, appreciate it.
My name's Cheryl Robertson, I live at 13413 192nd Avenue East, Bonnie Lake. I strongly object to the Gardenia Platt development proposal approved by the city of Bonnie Lake. I find it shocking that this development, which is only 600 feet from Lake Bonnie, was approved and quickly ushered through the planning process without conducting an environmental impact assessment. The city did not do due diligence to thoroughly understand the consequences to the environment, consequences to the natural habitat and wildlife, degradation of our biodiversity, consequences to the watershed, and potential dangers that the community could experience when you cut down the windbreak the forest offers. The development, if it goes through, would result in clear cutting five acres of forest, the greenbelt around the lake to build 19 homes that are starkly different and inconsistent with the existing rural neighborhood. In other words, the city of Bonnie Lake has approved the destruction of a rich urban forest to house an estimated 50 to 60 people in a development contrary to the existing rural theme. These numbers came from the SEPA checklist filed by Caliber, the developer. I find exchanging a forest to build homes housing 50 to 60 people to be a travesty. Let me say this again. The city approved cutting down an urban forest to build 19 houses for the benefit of 50 to 60 people. The potential loss of this priceless natural habitat, its biodiversity, ancient sanctuary, the forest, forest offers to wildlife is disturbing. Lake Bonnie is a beautiful and important natural habitat for migrating birds and protected species, including bald eagles, which remain protected under the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act and the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. This forest targeted for destruction provides a crucial roosting and foraging habitat for these birds. I took this picture on a peaceful Sunday morning on January 12th while visiting a neighbor who lives on Bonnie Lake. I call it looking for lunch. It was breathtaking, the experience only strengthened my belief that this development and destruction of the greenbelt is just plain wrong. Urban forests are priceless. They provide improved air quality because trees naturally filter and remove harmful particulates. Trees provide carbon storage. A single mature tree can absorb 48 pounds of carbon dioxide annually. Trees also provide natural stormwater management, natural stormwater management. They do this by reducing runoff and taking up water through their roots. In fact, according to Pierce County, conifers can hold up to 50% of rain that falls during a storm. A key consideration is the intensity of storms increase. Runoff from forested areas is five times less than improved surfaces. Forests naturally improve water quality by reducing polluted water from seeping into our watershed underground water. A key consideration since the Lake Bonnie is part of the Pierce County watershed. Forest wind barriers provide environmental stability. You cannot recoup the benefits a forest provides once the forest is gone. I feel the short term and long term consequences with this development to our environment, health, natural habitat, and community would be dire. I love living in the Tahali community. Unlike my neighbor down the road and across the street and around the corner, we have sidewalks. We have trees and trails to walk along, and we enjoy them. I walk out my front door and take a hike among the trees feeling like I'm miles away. Please seriously consider the benefits that an urban, urban forest offers to the well-being of the community at large and long-term benefits to our city. The proposed tax revenue that would be generated in exchange for the benefits this priceless urban forest provides is a cost too high to pay, and once it's gone, it's gone. In summary, I implore the city of Bonnie Lake to deny Gardenia Platt and to deny the tree cutting permit that's under appeal. They're there.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Ford, I live at 1821477th Street East in Bonnie Lake. And I am here again to express my strong opposition to the development of the Gardenia Platt, which would essentially eliminate, as you heard, the greenbelt one block from Lake Bonnie, a beautiful five acre forest, and in its place to put and build 19 homes. So currently, I want to give you an update. The only obstacle to development is an appeal of the tree cutting permit, which that permit was approved on November 14th, and it was appealed by the community on December 2nd. And so, and I want to make a note that in order to file an appeal for the permit, it costs $1,000, which is outrageous, in my opinion. And currently, there is a hearing examiner appointed, and a hearing date has been set for February 26. And so I want to talk a little bit about the tree clearing permit. So the development is almost five acres, and the permit authorizes 4.09 acres of the forest to be cleared. And that includes removing 312 significant trees and retaining over only 111 significant trees, which are scattered on the peripheral of the development. And the city wants to call this a greenbelt. I had a hand up, so you can see the pictures of what that is. If you look at the map, there's little red circles on the trees that will be retained. And the tree permit in process doesn't even include or look at trees that do not classify as significant, which means it doesn't take into account all the additional trees from cover and plants in the forest. I find this quite shocking, because if you look at how the tree permit is done, there's a, there is a formula that the city goes by to say that it meets the canopy needs and the tree needs, and it's absolutely very pro-developer. And so this city claims it recognizes the value of its urban forest and aims to increase its tree canopy cover from 34 to 38% by 2035, and that is part of the environmental envision statement, which was published in October. Now, however, I can say with this process, it appears that what Lake Bonnie and Bonnie Lake professes in writing is absolutely contrary to what the city practices in land development. Bonnie Lake's Urban Forestry Code, which is Title 16, Division 4, governs the tree removal and preservation of urban forestry goals, and states in there explicitly that its goal is to achieve no net loss of tree canopy areas. I don't know how you can look at this map that I provided and say that it's meeting our goals. Additionally, I do want to talk about the SEPA process because that has been quite an eye-opening process. So the community, as you heard, voiced their opinion and strong opposition, and the, and the city failed to follow up with them. Literally, it wrote what's called a DNS, that they said there's no need for an environmental impact statement, which is shocking. It just said, oh, I agree with everything that the developer said, and ushered it through. And then they said, oops, it's $4,000 if you want to apply a SEPA. And because so few people went ahead and made their comments, they didn't have the money, and it's, you have a window of maybe two weeks. So what I've provided, I did a little bit of research just to show you how shocking this is. The fees for SEPA appeals are much less around the county. And also Pierce County has provision PCC 2.05.020A, it stays, excuse me. Appeal fees, fees are fully refundable to any appellant who successfully appeals a decision of an administrative official to the hearing examiner. Well, if that's the county's regulations, our people who made comments were never notified of this, because that definitely would have given them permission to set the appeal in motion. So it's been an eye-opening educational experience. So I also want to say that there is strong community opposition to the development, because what you receive today and what you received previously are over 500 signatures of people who object to this and find it shocking that this is part of the city's development plans, because we are concerned that there are negative impacts on air, water, soil, wildlife, and elimination of our critical habitat. And as you can see, that includes all the migrating birds, the eagles, and other animals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excuse me. Anyone else for the good of the order?
Hello, everyone. I'm Dana McCauley, I live at 1821174th Street East in Bonnie Lake. I've been a resident here for over 30 years, and I've seen so many changes. I look around here and I see a lot of bored faces. I see people checking their cell phones and doing other business. We have 500 citizens who have signed this petition. We represent a lot of votes. And I just hope that you would consider what you want the city to look like. I moved here because my parents laughingly said, oh, you're on that road to Yakima. It was a beautiful community with beautiful streets and lots of trees. We have eagles in our backyard, a gorgeous lake that the community enjoys. I hear children laughing, I hear people having parties on the lake. I just want you to think seriously as you're considering the next steps, not only in this clearing of this forest, but in planning this community. What do you want us to look like? I can barely get home at night anymore. Myers Road is a disaster. Coming up Canyon Forest Road has become a freeway, and we're approving 19 homes on five acres, 500 feet from a pristine, beautiful resource of our community. I'm here representing Lake Bonnie Conservation Association, and I'm just asking for your consideration. If, if we can't stop this, and I hope we can, that we have, or not, we don't want to stop it, let's just modify it. Can we work together and look at how we can make this place a better place for our future and for our children, and not just approve things because it's better for the community, or not the community, the developers? Sorry, I'm a little passionate about this. Like I said, I've been here a long time. I've raised my children here. I watched my husband die on the shores of Bonnie Lake from cancer, and scattered his ashes in my backyard. This is where I want to be, but I don't know if I can, if this is the, the route we're taking as a community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Andre Gertan, I live at 8409182nd Avenue East. First of all, I want to apologize for not coming to any of these. First of all, I want to apologize for not coming to any of these sooner. You look really familiar. That's a good thing. I believe, I believe we met. Thank you all for everything you do. And again, I'm sorry I haven't taken time. I want to first thank those members that were here in two thousand and twenty-one. I sent you guys an email to try to help get our house rebuilt after it burned down twice. And it took about nine months, but finally got the permit. Thank you. And we've been in it for two years now, which is awesome. Took two years to build, but that's okay. I'm listening to all this awesome information and I'm hoping that you're really taking it to heart that it's not just the environmental impact, but think about the environmental impact on our roads. I live on one hundred eighty Second Avenue East, which is very busy, very busy. The four houses around me, before COVID, we've all had dogs and a cat die, get hit by a car. Since COVID, the traffic has only increased. We back in and out of our driveway often have to wait. Or if, like me and other neighbors that have boats and campers that we pull in in our driveway, obviously we're backing into our driveway. My wife and son have to go out, stop traffic, which again, one eighty second has become really busy. You're planning on these nineteen homes that create more traffic going down our road. I take ownership one hundred eighty second because I live there, getting to towns. My boss lives off of Lake Taps and he goes down our road to get to town. So know that it's a major thoroughfare. So you're thinking about allowing these homes to go in and our road that we already have a hard time walking down because again, there's no sidewalks. There's nowhere for people to walk. Over by the park that's there, it's a real dangerous corner when you're walking. You're walking up on one of the banks or down the other bank because it's narrow and people are coming around that corner. They're not paying attention to somebody walking. Okay, so we typically don't walk. But give that some thought in this process. I realize I'm late to this and I'm sorry again for that, but if alls we have is a tree cutting thing to stop this, you people need to do something more. These guys have given you great information. Some of you writing down, some of you on your phones. Thank you for everybody looking at me while I'm talking. I really appreciate it. Going to help one of my new friends read something that she wasn't able to. I would like to propose an alternative to the Bonnie Lake and Caliber. We are asking that you explore the option of placing land and conservancy for public use as a park. This aligns with Caliber's company states' values, stewards and community benefits. Their statement, it said that compassion is empathy with action to serve. Caliber takes care of its team and strives to benefit our community. You know, I'm going to stop reading there because I go back to what they've said and I want to emphasize the added traffic that's already pretty much a dangerous road. My house burned down. I had no place to park one of my cars. It was a, it is a convertible. They, somebody with the ash in front of my house decided to cut my top and try to steal my car. Still haven't quite finished fixing that. Before we put the fence up, somebody stole my truck out of my driveway. Yes, I had an alarm. It was armed. They got in, disarmed it, off they went. I did get it back, not before my wife bought another one that I have to fix. So now I got one broken, one working, which is kind of a bummer. But listen, you guys, I really appreciate everything you do and I appreciate you taking the time to listen to us. I really hope that you listen and that you act on the people that are taking the time to be here because I speak for my neighbors, all of them. I wish that we'd have known, we'd have signed the petition. We'd have been here more often. I wish, I really wish I'd have paid attention. You're going to see me a lot more. Don't know that I'm going to talk, but at least I'm going to be here because it's important to be part of our town to make it better. Thank you again and I hope you guys have a great night.
Thank you. Anyone else for the good of the order?
Hi, I'm Connie Decker. I live at one eight five zero one seventy-fourth Street East. I've been here for about thirty years. First, I'm going to finish up, and this is, I have a really short little email-y type statement because I don't have technological abilities to actually send an email. So I'll read my little notes here later. But I'm going to finish up an earlier statement. And I would like to propose an alternate to the Bonnie Lake and Caliber. I'm asking that the, asking that to explore the option of placing this land in a conservancy for public use as a park. This aligns with Caliber's company stated values of stewardship and community benefit. It said that compassion, that compassion is empathy with action to serve. Caliber takes care of its team and strives to benefit our communities. The Fennel Creek area has been recognized for its ecological importance. Pierce County and conservation groups have already taken steps to protect parts of this watershed. Your participation in this conservation effort would be, would create a lasting positive legacy for Caliber Company, Inc. and the city of Bonnie Lake and our community. And my very short, would have been an email says, and I have a lot of scratched out, so it's kind of not going to go real smoothly. I have lived in Bonnie Lake for thirty years and have loved this area around the lake for its surroundings and its unusually peaceful surroundings. The anxiety of driving in the bordering highways melts away when I get closer and closer to my little turnoff and go past all the freaky drivers and, and anyway, those guys. And, but the anxiety just kind of melts away when I drive the bordering highways as I near the area closer to Little Lake Bonnie. Our lake is so vulnerable to the creeping busyness of crowded, almost treeless areas. I was drawn to the lake area a long time ago and have come to appreciate how the spaces that include the residences and park areas and trees that mark the area and make it unique. Plans to cut up and overdevelop the areas like the Gardenia Platt. The five acre project would be a serious mark against our community. That's it. I wouldn't have time to tap out an email any longer than that. Thank you very much and I hope you appreciate how, how, what a jewel the Bonnie Lake area is. And especially our little lake, which a lot of people, when I tell them I live in Bonnie Lake, right on the lake, almost, I don't have to swim to get to my front door. But they say, oh, yeah, yeah, it's a big lake. I said, no, it's really, Bonnie Lake is, it's a, it's a small lake. It is not just a runoff from the roads. It is a lake. It's a spring fed lake. It's one of the few, I think, that are really natural lakes in a large part of this area. We have a lot of little lakes that have, I don't know where they get their water really, but they are not spring fed. This is a natural lake. It's a natural habitat. We have fish that actually live in it besides the ones that are planted and caught. It's a, it's a unique, wonderful, natural area, has eagles, which people find hard to believe. I've seen them, an osprey. And there's so much natural beauty. It would be a crime to all of us to do away with so much of that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Mary Ann Robinett and I live at seven seven oh five one eighty second. And I actually was not going to speak today and I'm petrified. In two thousand and sixteen, my son bought the house that we live in. He passed away in two thousand and twenty. We moved into the house because we love this community. We love the one acre parcels that everybody has. We love the beauty of the lake. We have dogs. We walk it every day. We don't ask that no development take place, but we do ask for responsible development, right? The proposal is very dense. It creates a lot of traffic. Again, as it was already stated, if you drive down our street, you will see we are a mini freeway. I am scared to death and one of my dogs will get out and get hit. It's a terrible, terrible thing and no action has been taken ever to help us in that area, right? We do like to walk. It is, it's a very beautiful area. So I just would ask that you would try to come up with some kind of responsible way to preserve our beauty and go ahead and develop. I think we can do it all. We just have to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now move to those that are virtual. You have five minutes. State your name and address for the record, please. Is anybody here? Not seeing anybody. Okay. The city will now disable all video and microphones for those attending virtually.
See, my memory.
Recreation budget.
Yeah, recreation budget and.
You guys looking for me?
Here we go.
Oh, yeah, there we go.
Take some notes there.
The sound was like, yeah. So did you get that finance committee meeting today at five PM? We covered the personnel update and then we had the approving and rate adjustment by Murray's disposal. That's coming forward to a regular council meeting. And there's a positive increase in there because of the legal pass through, the client obligations and a negative refund coming to us too. So it's a plus and minus on that. And then we touched on the recreation update there. So that was our open discussion items. We were done this evening early. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Community development, please.
Yes, we met last week, January twenty first at five PM. We do encourage the community to come to those meetings. They are open to the public. They're upstairs on the second floor in the conference room. We discussed the garbage and waste enforcement, which will be on full council tonight. So we'll just go ahead and wait for that discussion. And then we also talked about the Planning Commission work plan. That will be basically brought to the council. We have public hearings. We have all kinds of different things that have to go through. And plus they're still kind of finishing up in the state legislature, what all the new rules and regulations are going to be. So that will, was on the consent agenda for tonight because there really isn't a lot for us to discuss. It's basically just the Planning Commission's work plan for two thousand and twenty-five. So, and we will have plenty of time to discuss ADUs and all of that in the future. Our next meeting has been canceled. So we will meet again on the, I think it's the seventeenth, eighteenth. Okay, so January, or February eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-five, five PM upstairs in the conference room.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee.
We didn't meet. We haven't met since.
There was no meeting this month. Our next meeting will be February eleventh at three forty-five in the upstairs meeting room. So public is always welcome.
Thank you. I believe you have a report for PCRC.
Yeah, so for Pierce County Regional Council, we met on January sixteenth, which is Thursday at six PM. That is basically virtual. They do meet in person if you want to go. But we discussed the, we approved our minutes, discussed our legislative priorities, which is basically where we changed some of the verbiage and we are asking the state to fund any mandates or laws that they pass for the GMA or any of the, like SR one sixty-seven improvements that anytime they want to pass legislation that is going to force the cities or counties to do, make improvements, that those improvements are incentivized and that they are fully funded. And then we had committee reports, announcements, and we adjourned our meeting. Our next meeting will be February twentieth of two thousand and twenty-five at six PM.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we have the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. As opposed? I should wait a little bit longer for this. All right, now we do have a full council issue. Item A, Madam Clerk.
This is item A, which is AB twenty-five dash oh three, ordinance D twenty-five dash oh three. The council motion would be to amend section eight point zero four point one nine zero of the Bonnie Lake Municipal Code to amend the enforcement provisions for violations of chapter eight point zero four point one nine zero of the Bonnie Lake Municipal Code, providing for severability and corrections and establishing an effective date.
So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion? Councilmember McLemus.
Yeah, so my first tenure as council member, I've argued against all of the contracts with the disposal company on the principle that I didn't feel it was intelligent or reasonable for the city to enter into a contract and force residents to pay. And I'd also witnessed, while I wasn't a council member, multiple citizens at that time in, in early two thousand that were really upset about it. So when I saw this, I was like, oh, boy, here we go again. But then when you read it, you find out this is really excellent work by the staff that we should recognize in the fact that they're actually making the process of when there are, when there's a violation that's found, that it's, it's more reasonable for the citizen to resolve. And, and I'd like to say also and point out, take the point here that the city does not look for violators. Violators are discovered mainly because of other, other activities that go on, code enforcement activities, and then this will be one of the other things that will, will come to light during the violation. So even though I usually don't like this whole city having a contract making citizens pay the money, I, I have to say that this, I think, is a step forward and it's good for, for the citizens as best as it can be in, in the way that it was, has reduced the, the impact of having a violation and the assurance that we're not out prosecuting people for this. We're not looking for it, but it's just a matter of, 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 of practice when other things are going on that this, this will also be impacted. So I'm going to support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Polerton.
Yeah, it also, by having the code enforcement officers making these code enforcements, it allows for, and prioritizes the, the achievement of voluntary compliance so that they don't have to issue fines. So there's several warnings. So there's several warnings before they actually get to a fine. And before, it used to be an automatic $250 fine for every single instance where they were not in compliance. And now it's been lowered, so you have, you have the code enforcement officer trying to voluntarily get compliance, but then after that, then the penalties start at $100, $100. And then the second violation would be $200. And then the last and most expensive would be back to the $250. But all the while, working with that person to be able to come into compliance and helping them if they're having difficulty. So I think that there's also some scholarships or things like that if it's low income as well. So I think this really is good for the community because you want, you don't want to have rats, you don't want to have people causing junkyards and different problems, but you also, you know, if there's somebody who's in need and can't get help, then this, this gives them the ability to talk to the enforcement officers if there is a problem, and as long as they're working towards a solution, then it doesn't cause a financial hardship on those people. So I, I think this is a good policy.
Oh, thank you. Deputy Ms. Swatman.
Thank you very much, yes. So I agree with what Councilmember McLeymans was kind of talking about a little bit there when he was saying that there's usually a problem when people view the city, being inside and out of the city, that they're really concerned when they have to come into the city, you know, as residents or what have you. It's like, oh, I don't want to be a resident of the city. City makes me do all these different things. Of course, garbage service is very important. Now, people need to have that. And I think the way we had it set up before, we've had this in several different areas of regulations where, you know, we need people to be able to comply, and we need to be able to have tools for them to comply with the regulations. But we need to make it hard for the city to, you know, automatically do that enforcement because if we go the route of where it's like, oh, your grass is two inches tall, you know, I'm going to send you a ticket, and we make it too easy to enforce, and that's what you get, is you get a lot of like letters mailed out there that says you're not in compliance with this particular regulation. You know, if DM or Murray's supplies the city with a list of the 100 people tomorrow that are not in compliance with the garbage regulation, and they want, you know, is the city just issue, like, just issue fines for that? This is like they do when the water is not paid, they just issue a fine, you know, right? I don't want to make it that easy.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, that was, that was the beauty of this particular change is that it allows for people to have time and work with the code enforcement officers, but also, just so you know, like, the city does not go looking for problem children who aren't paying for their bills. And, and that was one thing that Councilmember McLeymans brought up at the CDC meeting was, you know, hey, do you have a list of people who are not in compliance with their garbage disposal? And Jason Sullivan, public director, said, no, we actually don't have a list, and, you know, it would take quite a while for us to actually look up and find out who, who is in violation of these codes. So the city is not out there trying to find people who are in violation. The code enforcement officers are not trying to find people. It's usually if a citizen calls in and turns in somebody because, you know, hey, I've got rats and it's not my problem, it's coming from my neighbor's house, they're turning into a garbage dump. And then that's how the, the city usually ends up finding the people who aren't paying for their garbage. And I don't believe that Murphy's even keeps a list, or do they send us a list?
They, no.
I mean, we'd literally have to go through it, you know, jump through loop, through hoops to try to find out people who, you know, because we're not looking. So that's the good thing, right?
Yeah, they, they don't send us a monthly list of who does and doesn't have trash service. I'm sure they have a, a list somewhere that they keep, but they don't send it to us on a monthly basis. Typically, what the, the process that happens is when we get a complaint about someone's yard, you know, trash and rubbish, is one of the things we check is do they have trash service? And then we have to make a phone call to Murray's that says, does this address have trash service? And that's typically the, the extent of that we're looking into it, is when we have other code enforcement cases related to trash and garbage. We, we kind of do that double check to make sure that they are doing their part to, to keep the, the properties clean from, from nuisance trash.
Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor of ordinance D 25-03, say aye.
I'm in a, of course.
Okay, as opposed, that would be one then. Thank you. Okay, there is no executive or closed session, so seeing no more business, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
You.